Welcome to the Goodyear City Council Meeting. We're excited to have you be a part of this important public process. Tonight, you will have the opportunity to address City Council on both non-agenda and agenda items. You must fill out a speaker request card in order to address the City Council. The agendas and speaker request cards are located in the back of the council chambers. Please drop your completed card in the tray next to the blank speaker cards. If the meeting has already begun, please hand it to the city employee at the back of the room. You may check the "I do not wish to speak" option on the card. This allows you to let council know your opinion without having to speak. In accordance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, please contact the staff member if you need any assistance. Public comment on a non-agenda item will take place during the citizen comment portion of the evening. These are items that don't appear on tonight's formal agenda. The city clerk will call your name when it's time for you to speak. At that time, please approach the podium and tell us your name for the record. You'll have a maximum of three minutes. The timer is on the screens visible from the podium. Note that you may also choose not to speak if other speakers before you have said what you wanted to say. Shouting, cheering, and loud noises will not be tolerated and violators may be removed for disrupting the meeting. Goodyear City Council meetings stream live on Facebook, YouTube, X, and online at GoodyearAZ.gov. Follow the city's social media pages so you don't miss out on all that's happening in Goodyear. Thank you for coming to this meeting and being an active part of your city. And remember, it's a great time to be in Goodyear.
I'd like to call a regular meeting to order August 25th, 2025. Everybody mark their calendars present. We have everybody here, thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance and invocation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Almighty Father, I ask that you provide wisdom to all of those on this council so we may make wise decisions for our community. I also ask that you help heal this nation which suffers from a lack of civility so that we can come together as a nation and work towards a more civil society for the betterment of all. Please protect our men and women in uniforms serving here overseas from injury and provide those in this meeting safe passage home in your name. We have one communication item tonight. First item is a commentary to Goodyear history and a celebration of the opening of the new Goodyear High School. Tammy, you're up.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Pizzillo, members of the City Council. It's so nice to see you this evening. And yeah, really something fun to share with you tonight. You know, first we'll start with the growth of our city. There's no doubt that Goodyear is growing faster than ever. And in fact, when you drive, you know, on my I-10 just west of the 303, you might recall what that plot of land used to be, which is the old Phoenix trotting park. And while that might be gone today, that plot of land certainly lives on in a new way. Tonight, I'd like to start with a video that we like to play for you that was produced by the city's digital communications team that really takes a piece of Goodyear's past, present, and future and brings it all together.
Phoenix Trotting Park was a harness raceway that was built in Goodyear, Arizona in the mid-1960s. Well, the creator of the trotting park was James Donegan Jr. He was instrumental in the Buffalo Raceway in New York. And he came out to Arizona and backed by a group of investors decided to build a gleaming new harness racing facility in the desert. In harness racing, the driver sits on a two-wheeled cart called a sulky, which is pulled by the horse. It's a completely different style of racing and one that was not familiar to most Americans at the time. The opening night ceremony had attendance of over 12,000 people. It was a very highly publicized event, very well attended, and a huge kickoff to what they thought was going to be a very successful business endeavor.
I'm Sally Kiko, and I first moved to Goodyear in 1945. The West Valley is always the last to get any amenities or sports teams. So we were pretty excited about that. I was an RN at the time and was offered a job in the first aid room. In that, it was just a small room. We had a bed, some first aid supplies.
The trotting park was designed to be a luxurious and state-of-the-art facility for its time. That included the design, which was done by Italian architects, and the design of the building actually pushed the project way over budget. Originally supposed to cost around $2 million, it ended up costing closer to $10 million to complete. The inside featured a restaurant, multiple levels of seating, concourse, and all the amenities of the day.
It was. It was very well-built and the architecture was very good. There's one picture of one of the escalators with chandeliers overhead that just kind of depicts the class of the place. There were the general grandstands on the higher levels. You had nicer seats and a bar close by. And then there was the Sunset Casino where they had fine dining with white tablecloths and good wine.
At the time, Phoenix was dramatically smaller than it is today. And it was, the trotting park was located far outside the downtown city center. This was 20 years before Interstate 10 was completed. And, you know, Van Buren Road out to Goodyear was a main thoroughfare. So for a dollar, you could buy a bus ticket from downtown Phoenix out to Goodyear to come watch the horses run.
When Donegan came to propose the facility, the politicians jumped all over it. They were just happy to get development at whatever cost and they promised him the freeway would be bye in two years. It was completed 20 years later. Goodyear was a working-class town. There weren't a lot of horse betters or people that gambled. They didn't have the extra money to do that. The owners were looking for the people to come out from Scottsdale and Paradise Valley.
The trotting park actually only ran for about two and a half seasons. The first season was fairly well-attended, and after that, attendance started to drop off to just, you know, a few thousand people on a weekend showing up for the races. So it wasn't immediate, but it quickly became obvious that the crowds were not sustainable to keep the operation going.
Even I thought it would get better. You know, the initial grand opening was huge. There were a lot of people there, and as time went by, the numbers dwindled. But every once in a while, you'd have a good night, and they did promotional things to try to bring people in on special nights. In retrospect, I'm kind of surprised that they opened the third season.
Summer vacations, you're driving to California, go to the beach with your family. You see that on the way there, you see it on the way back. It was always their kind of visual spot that they were back home.
So one of the most famous things to ever happen at the trotting park after its closure was its role in the 1998 movie No Code of Conduct starring Charlie Sheen. The movie was directed by Bret Michaels of Poison fame. The final showdown of the film has the smugglers and the good guys facing off in the abandoned trotting park, and there's a massive explosion that takes place that is kind of the pinnacle of the film. The trotting park, as much as I would have liked to have seen it saved, was built for one very specific purpose, which was a grandstand facility for horse racing events. That in turn made it very difficult to repurpose into another type of use.
We knew that naming a high school after the city is a big, big thing and a large undertaking. And if you're going to call yourself the Goodyear High School in the city of Goodyear, you better own up to it and you better put in the work. And we're prepared to do so. Our staff is great. We're ready to go.
As a local girl, I'm very excited to finally have a Goodyear High School. I mean, we've never had a school by our name because we've always been part of another district.
One of the big iconic things about the horse track was the big frame windows in the front in the movie last got blown out. And so our architects did a really cool job. They actually took the frame pattern of the old windows and incorporated that into our tile. And so in all of our student, actually, all of the restrooms there, the tile is the same pattern as the horse track windows.
When I found out that the new Goodyear High School is going to incorporate design elements of the trotting park into the school, I was really happy. I love when people build forward but keep that connection to the past and to the community. I think that's such an excellent example.
During construction, one of our superintendents found a horseshoe, and it's an old rusted, mangled thing. And so it doesn't look like much, but anytime you find something that relates to what was there before, right? That's a, that's a cool thing. And we found out that Burzville was the name of the horse that won the first race at the track when it opened up. And so we're calling it Burzville Shoe. We're putting up a plaque on our wall by the fieldhouse for all of our athletes, you know, they can tap that horseshoe for good luck on the way out to the field. We wanted to celebrate Goodyear and the West Valley frankly, because this whole place was built on people who had that Maverick mindset.
I think a lot of the fascination with the facility is due to rumors and urban legend, you know, drivers that died at the track, and that's why it's closed and all these kind of myths and legends surrounding the facility. So I think it lives on in people's popular culture for those reasons.
In this modest town of Goodyear, even before it grew to this size, it had a beautiful building that was designed by an Italian architect.
And this photo that you're looking at is actually hanging in the lobby of the new Goodyear High School. You may recognize it is the Goodyear Cornucopia, which was the official first city seal designed by Mayor Charles Salem in 1975 to really symbolize the city's roots and its community. So tonight, it's only fitting to have join us tonight Principal Lynn from Goodyear High School, who is going to join us now with something special for the mayor and the council. And then after that, we'd like to invite you to come down for a photo.
Thank you. Do you want it? Tammy, do you want it now or after?
All right. Well, good evening, Mayor Pizzillo and members of the council, Goodyear community. Great to be here tonight. My name is Jason Lynn, principal at Goodyear High School, and just wanted to be here and share this moment with you all and just tell you how grateful I am to be your principal at Goodyear High School. First and foremost, we wouldn't be here without the voters. So we thank the voters very much for helping us get the school, you know, that bond passed. The beautiful facility that we have is because of the voters. So thank you to that. To the city, thank you for the help in procuring our permits and all the things to get us. It was one year. We broke ground one year ago, and we opened up just three, just three short weeks ago. The three weeks have gone really, really fast. We've got a lot of cool things happening on campus and very exciting times, but we wouldn't have that done without Chase, our general contractor and ADM architects as well, the city, helping us get those permits there. Real quick, throw out a personal shout-out to Mr. Terry, council member, used to serve on our board at Alphafria, the Union High School District. So we thank him for the years of that and all the support along the way. Mr. Terry was also instrumental in helping me get that in our lobby, which is great. For those of you who don't know, we have a museum of Goodyear planned for the auditorium at our school. And we were here meeting with Mr. Knurk in the department upstairs, and we saw this and some photos, and I said, where's that? We should, we should get that at Goodyear. That would be awesome. And we were able to do so. So we're excited to share the history of Goodyear, but then it reminds us of how to keep moving forward, right? And then, and then lastly, you know, just as a gesture of kind of a partnership in exchange and things, we do have a mock football helmet for Mayor Pizzillo and the council to display here at City Hall. And as you guys gave us that, we're going to give you this. Whoops. Not nearly as grand of a thing, but we had it made specially for you guys, so we'd love to share that with you. And yeah, just excited to be here, excited to be part of Goodyear and carry on the tradition of the West Side and, you know, make, make our Goodyear residents proud and go Mavericks.
All right. All right. Do you want to attempt a shot? Let's go on down. Let's get a shot with the principal.
Got to give him that. Which way to go? Does it matter? Don't fumble it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Can we comment? Yeah, does anybody? Let me start. I'll start to the right and we'll move on over to you. Anybody like to make any comments? We'll start, start with Benita. Go ahead.
Yeah, it's been very exciting to see the, the high school grow and come together. I was at the assembly. My, I just have a question. How many students do you have now? There was 400 and there were still people registering?
Yes, ma'am. We have 440 students today.
Okay. Awesome.
All ninth grade.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Tammy and your team, I love the video, and I love how you incorporated the history of that property and then woven the story of the Goodyear High School. And that even the connection of you taking some of our older artifacts and starting a museum, it just brings that richness of Goodyear's history that wouldn't have a place necessarily to reside. So we're very excited about that, and we know you're going to be wildly successful there.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Go ahead, Willie.
Well, I'm really excited because I've been waiting 25 years to have a school named after this city. We've been paying all of these school taxes, and of course, we love all the other schools, but they don't say Goodyear. So yours is very special, and we plan to support it as much as we possibly can. We just wish you the best success. It's so exciting to think you have 442 freshmen that are going to be the first graduating class. And that's a big deal because they're going to break ground to show everybody else what a wonderful school. It's probably the best school that has been built in Goodyear, just for the high-tech and, and the internet capability and the security purposes. It's just a beautiful school, and I hope all of you in the audience have an opportunity to go to school and see what it is, or at least support the football games, because these are our kids.
Thank you. Trey, I know you're very proud of this.
Yes, Mr. Lynn said, previous to coming on council, this was kind of a big project. Five years ago, I came on the high school district governing board, and people talked about needing a new school, and we were many, many roadblocks and speed bumps along the way, site plans, and I don't know how many different places and styles, but we settled on this. And yeah, I just can't say enough about Mr. Lynn, his leadership, not only before this, but as an assistant principal and athletic director at Desert Edge. He's from this community. He serves this community, has for a long time, and just look forward to what he does with this pretty cool project.
Okay. Thank you.
I loved watching all of the video. Tammy, that was amazing from everything that was from the past. I love all that stuff. That history is so awesome. That's what we're trying to protect in this city is to keep the little bit of history that we've got. And we've got it now on video from everything that was shot there, everything that happened there way back when, and what it's turned into now in the present with the school. And I think they couldn't have picked somebody better for that job. Congratulations and good luck. I think it's going to be an exciting venture.
Thank you.
All right. Go ahead.
Yeah. No, this is a fantastic project. I live right there. Some of my two younger kids are going to be going to this high school. So they'll be, my eighth grader will be your second class there, so that'll be, that'll be great. So it's been fun seeing it get built over time. And being an Alphafria graduate myself, with the only, when there's only one high school here, it's really fun to see now six, six Alphafria high schools out here. So, so I'm sort of excited to hear, hear the, hear the band, hear the, see the Friday Night Lights, all the, all the different activities going on there, and then watching my kids there as well. So welcome, welcome to the community. You guys have a good, a good, good season, good year. So you had a good time there. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, when we took that tour of the school, I mean, you built an awesome school there. You really did. Those kids are going to be proud. You guys are proud of what you did there. And like I said, I'm going to see you all Wednesday for the first football game. So looking forward to that. I know you're a very competitive guy, so I expect, yeah, just a wee bit, right? So I, so I expect, you know, quality effort out there from your team. So again, thank you, and I'll see you Wednesday.
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right. With that, now it's time for members of the public who wish to address the City Council on any non-agenda items within the jurisdiction of Goodyear City Council. We have any speaking cards?
Yes, Mayor, we have four speakers.
Okay. Call.
Lisa Oster.
All right. Before you start, want to let you know the council will listen to comments and may take any one of the following. Respond to criticism, request that the staff investigate report on the matter, request the matter be scheduled on a future agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. The time will be on the screen. You will see when it gets to about 20 seconds before you begin. Just identify yourself that you're a resident. You don't have to give the address.
Yes, I'm a resident of Goodyear. I moved here August of 2019 with my husband, retired healthcare professional MBA, BSN nurse.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. My name is Lisa Oster, and I live in Goodyear, the Portales community. I've been corresponding with your city's planning and zoning staff regarding two assisted living homes operating within our gated community. I would like to formally bring several concerns to your attention. One, concern one, zoning history. These two assisted living homes were established 2019, 2021, before the city of Goodyear required zoning for such facilities. One property has changed hands in 2023. Concern number two, HOA CCNRs. All Portales homeowners, including the owners of these properties, agreed to abide by our original CCNRs. The CCNRs explicitly prohibit assisted living or group homes. Despite this, the city of Goodyear never sought or required HOA clearance for allowing these facilities to operate. Concern number three, single-family use restriction. Our CCNR state that each dwelling may be occupied only by a single family and may not be used for non-residential purposes. The provision directly conflicts with the operation of assisted The provision directly conflicts with the operation of assisted living homes. The concern number four is the legal precedence. Several, Arizona Supreme Court has several rulings since 2016, 2018, 2022 that have upheld HOA authority to enforce the original CCNRs, which ours are the original CCNRs. For example, HOAs can prohibit short-term rentals if those restrictions are clearly stated in the original governing documents, which they are in ours. Concern, public safety. One of these assisted living homes has generated 16 police reports from September 23. I could have gone back farther, but I just did September 2023 to August 2025, this month. In addition to the police responding, the fire department and ambulance have responded sometimes. Adult Protective Service reports filed to allegations of abuse. This month, three dementia Alzheimer's mentally impaired residents were involved in a physical altercation requiring multiple police officers and Maricopa County crisis intervention. These facilities are licensed to admit high-level Alzheimer's and dementia patients, raising serious concerns about the neighborhood's safety. Questions for the city of Goodyear. One, does the city intervene with the operation of such facilities impacts the safety, security or quality of life of nearby homeowners? Number two, how does the city reconcile zoning approvals with HOA CCNRs that explicitly prohibit certain types of residential use? Thank you for your time and consideration.
Hey, hold it right there. City manager, do we, do we have her information?
City clerk, yes, we do. We'll get back to her with those answers.
Okay, I think attorney will probably be involved in some of that, right? Okay, thank you. Second?
Eric Oster.
Yes, sir. You heard the, the previous Phil. Just give your name, just tell them whether you're a resident and you've got three minutes. Go ahead.
Thank you. Name is Eric Oster. I'm a resident of Goodyear. Before I begin, I would like to commend the mayor's office and the city council for the professionalism and dedication you all consistently demonstrate in serving our city. I mean that very sincerely, on behalf of my wife too. Incidentally, she is a better half of the Oster family. My topic today is a request regarding pickleball at the Goodyear Community Park located at 3151 North Litchfield Road. Several weeks ago, I asked the acting Parks and Recreation Director, Mr. David Sedd, if the city might allow the pickleball court lights to be turned on at 5:00 a.m. instead of 6:00 a.m. Mr. Sedd was very considerate, kind and professional in responding. But he explained that the current timing system, the meter, does not allow for this change. Very disappointing. I am here today to respectfully request the city consider adjusting the lighting schedule only during the hot summer months, from May through September. There are two main reasons for this request. Early work and play start times are common in our community. In many outside industries across the valley, such as construction, workers begin their day as early as 4:00 a.m. to avoid the extreme heat. Two, pickleball players face the same challenge. Many residents enjoy playing at 5:00 a.m. or earlier to beat the heat. A number of them are working parents and professionals who can only fit in an hour of recreation time before starting their workday. Allowing lights at 5:00 a.m. would be a tremendous benefit to these citizens, giving them a safe and healthy way to start their day during our hottest months. We would be very respectful of this privilege and appreciate your consideration of this request. Thank you very much for your time and service to our community.
City manager, will you check to see what any restrictions might be of our ordinance or the ability to meet their needs?
Yes, I will and we'll follow up.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next?
Tom Blackman.
Hi.
Member, just name, you don't have to give the location. You have three minutes.
Yeah, yeah, Tom Blackman. I was just going to say, I was at the trotting park when it opened. It was like, that's weird. Okay, I'm a resident. I live in, in Cantomea, which is as far south as you can go in Goodyear. I do a lot of driving on Estrella Boulevard and, and Blard Avenue and to get to downtown areas. You know, I try to drive the streets carefully. I, I call it driving the lights because you're trying to figure out when it's going to turn. Well, now that we're on demand light systems, all bets are off. I mean, on a, on a right-hand turn going down Estrella, it can be anywhere from immediate change to 10, 10 seconds, 15 seconds, maybe 30 or longer. So there's no, there's no pattern that you can try to, you know, I'm going to drive it and do my stop to start. So I would like to see if you could, I'm sure most of the stuff is electronic now with computerized gadgets and it would be easy to just bump in 30 seconds of delay. I've several times I've counted, it's like, do I slam on my brakes or do I run the red light? It's, I mean, it changes that fast. Sometimes even before the car turning right has had a chance to stop, it's changed colors. The same thing for the left-hand, or left-hand turns. And obviously that has to change, but I would, I would like to see a delay put into the left-hand turn too, so that they're all the same across the board. So that everywhere I go in Goodyear, I know that if a car is approaching, I got to start looking to see whether the light's going to change. So do that. And then I've been concerned for a long time about the Estrella Foothills High School and it's a, it's a mess. I mean, I don't go down there very often in the morning, but I went down there last week and there had to have been a mile of cars trying to turn left into the high school. Don't know what the event was, but there needs to be something done to redesign that intersection at Estrella and Wolfpack Road. Make it wider, maybe bring two lanes in, left-hand turn lanes in from Estrella going south, two right-hand lanes going north, something. Give them a second place to, to drop off. You should be able to go a half a mile south and, and make a U-turn. And a lot of people will some by and drop the su, drop their students off, but that's changed, it's no longer legal to do that. But I would recommend or like to see that you take down the no U-turn turn and build, just build a pullout. You know, you got like a bus stop pullout and just build that so they can pull in and drive and drop off their kids and go again. Because I mean, if you're driving south and you got all that traffic, it's like somebody's going to pull out in front of you and cause some problems. So thank you for your time and hopefully we can do it. I did send a letter to the traffic department.
Did you, and?
We have his contact information, city clerk. I'm verifying, yes.
Yes, we do.
All right, we will follow up.
Okay, all right, thank you. Next?
Teresa Christensen.
Just naming with you a resident, you, you saw the stuff previous. Three minutes and you'll, you'll catch it when it's two. All right, 20 seconds, go ahead.
So my name is Teresa Christensen and I am fortunately, I'm not a Goodyear resident, but hopefully a future business partner. I was, first of all, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Teresa Christensen and I'm the founder of Bright Beginnings Early Child Development Center. I was asked to come here this evening and give you three minutes, even though I'm incredibly nervous, so please bear with me. For nearly three decades, I've worked at the intersection of early child development, workforce solutions and community partnerships. I take designing solutions and strengthening family and supporting economic growth very seriously. As most of you know, Goodyear is a booming town and it is full of economic development. I'm also a member of Westmark. I've seen many of your faces there, although I didn't know who you were at the time. I'm the only, only early childhood representative, which should tell you something. The challenge is, as the fastest growing cities in the West Valley, we have to keep up with the demand of supporting our families and our workforce. But we're not doing it. And at an urgent growth rate and the cost of childcare, it becomes a problem of an economic collapse. So I'm here today to let you know that you have a partner and I can actually propose solutions instead of just talk about a problem and ask you to spend tax dollars. There's ways to partner with Goodyear employers, co-fund dedicated childcare slots, leverage state and federal existing funds and train and currently existing infrastructure, believe it or not, that's already there. The solutions don't rely heavily on taxpayer approaches. They're sustainable, employer-driven and strengthen both family and workforce. I know, it's like too good to be true, right? I can see your face. Formally collaborating with my company or even just asking me, how do I do it? It's that easy. So I'm out here, my ask is to prioritize childcare infrastructure in your planning. Not so hard, right? And to pilot innovative childcare models. There's actually them existing currently out there. I just need a few minutes of your time. That's it, that's all. That's all I've come here to ask today. So with your leadership and expertise and mine as well, after all three decades, give or take, I'm here to help because I know that your families need my help and I'm here to offer it. That's it?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Do we have her, we have her information?
We have her information. It looks like the city clerk does and I will set up a meeting personally with you.
I would love that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
No, thank you. All right, with that, anything else? Okay, thank you. City clerk, please read the consent agenda, items two through 16 by title only.
Item two, approval of minutes. Item three, approval of series 12 restaurant liquor license for Chipotle Mexican Grill, number 5637. Item four, approved budget amendments and related expenditure authority. Item five, approve the state 911 services administration grant. Item six, approve three intergovernmental agreements with Alwafria Union High School District, number 216, for school resource officer SRO services. Item seven, approval of intergovernmental agreement with Maricopa County for homeless outreach services fiscal year 2026. Item eight, approve the second amendment to the lease agreement for operation of BMX track and concessions. Item nine, approve the second amendment to the comprehensive sign package for Goodyear Municipal Complex. Item 10, approve the second amendment to the comprehensive sign package for shops at Seraphina. Item 11, adopt resolution number 2025-2483 approving the amended and restated development agreement for Fulton Homes at Ballpark Village. Item 12, adopt resolution number 2025-2484 approving the exchange of real property for a fire station and the land exchange agreement for the exchange. Item 13, adopt resolution number 2025-2485 authorizing the city manager and/or their designee to execute a license agreement with Summit Infrastructure Group, LLC, a Virginia limited liability company, and to enter into separate agreements for in-kind exchanges, which may include fiber and conduit for the city's exclusive use. Item 14, adopt resolution number 2025-2486 authorizing the city manager, designee to execute a license agreement with MCI Metro Access Transmission Services LLC, DBA Verizon Access Transmission Services, and to enter into separate agreements for in-kind exchanges, which may include fiber and conduit for the city's exclusive use. Item 15, adopt resolution number 2025-2487 authorizing the city manager, designee to execute a license agreement with Cogent Fiber LLC, a Delaware limited liability company, FK Sprint Communications Company LP, and to enter into separate agreements for in-kind exchanges, which may include fiber and conduit for the city's exclusive use. And item 16, approve the agreement for Salt River Water Users Association for water exchange between the city of Goodyear and the city of Glendale.
Thank you. Does anybody on the council wish to remove an item? Do you have a question?
I have a question.
Okay, anybody? So which one you have a question on?
15 and 14.
15 and 14? All right, let's see, where's Philip? Who's going to answer that one? Oh, here. There he comes. There he comes.
All right. How you doing? So I had a question on the fiber there. Is this going to be similar to like the wired? Is it going to be as extensive? Where they're going to go through all the neighborhoods and lay fiber in the same type of areas? Or is this a different style of fiber?
Is this the Verizon?
This is both the Verizon and the Sprint.
So Verizon and Sprint, they are already have a license agreement currently? We don't, I didn't talk with them on the actual map or whether they were planning on any extensions of those fiber. But these are essentially renewals. So they already have an agreement with the city. It did expire and we want to do some cleanup language with the agreements. So we went ahead and updated the template agreement.
Okay, so it's already existing fiber. Because I know, I was just at the league conference and there's other fiber providers that want to come into Goodyear. So I was curious if these were already, I didn't, I didn't see that they were already in the ground.
Correct, yeah. So fiber, Verizon and Sprint both have fiber already in the ground.
Okay, that's good. Yeah, I like competition. So the more users we get in the, in the ground, I think that's better for, for residents to have more choices. So, all right, just curious. Thank you for the clarification.
Everybody good? See a motion in a second up on the board? Go ahead and open up for a vote. Passes 7-0, thank you. We have four public hearings tonight. First public hearing is to consider the South Perryville Road adjacent to La Privada parcel five annexation. Open the public hearing. Please introduce yourself for the public.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm Kyle Abbott, senior planner, with a request for the annexation of South Perryville Road adjacent to what is currently La Privada parcel five. Although the annexation property is privately owned, Maricopa County assessor's map reflects the property is county maintained road. The property owner is requesting the annexation to facilitate the half-street improvements along South Perryville Road as part of the La Privada residential subdivision. The residential subdivision is already within city of Goodyear limits. The annexation area we are discussing today is approximately 0.978 acres. On April 28, 2025, council authorized staff to move forward with the annexation process. In July, council held a public hearing. There were no speakers at the hearing. Tonight is the final public hearing and staff is seeking adoption of an ordinance to approve the annexation. The proposed annexation is consistent with the city's annexation policy criteria. The policies include long-term desirability, likelihood the property would develop in the county or by any other city and general plan compatibility. The property is located within the city's municipal planning area and meets state statutory requirements for annexation. Mayor, council, thank you for considering this annexation this evening and this concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Any speaker cards?
No, mayor.
Anybody in the audience like to speak? Seeing none, okay, close the public hearing. City clerk, please read ordinance number 2025-1636 by the title only.
All right, ordinance number 2025-1636 extending and increasing the corporate limits of the city of Goodyear, Maricopa County, state of Arizona by annexing approximately 0.978 acres of property generally located along the east half of South Perryville Road and south of the West Lilac Street alignment.
Thank you. City coun, uh, see, we've got a motion. With the council in our motion in a second to adopt the ordinance 2025-1636. I see a motion in a second on there. Open for discussion. See no discussion. Everybody good? Open for a vote. Passes 7-0, thank you. Uh, next public hearing. Let's get a rezoning of the, what's it, Fasern at Palm Valley, if I pronounced that correctly. You're up. Please introduce yourself to the public. See now that goes down, goes up, goes down, goes up.
I'm a little shorter than Kyle. Good evening, Mayor.
Uh, good evening, uh, Mayor Pacillo and council members. This is a request for a rezone for Pisner at Palm Valley, and I am Ann Dolmidge, Principal Planner. The project site is about seventeen point five five acres, and it's located at the northwest corner of Monte Vista Road and Pebble Creek Parkway. Existing zoning is the Palm Valley Phase Eight Planned Area Development, or PAD. And the PAD allows for high-density residential at this site, which is the equivalent of eighteen multifamily units per acre. For a site of this size, the existing zoning allows up to three hundred and fifteen units. And a site plan was approved for the site in two thousand and seven for three hundred units. Um, that was never constructed, and the site has been vacant ever since, and the site plan has expired. Today, the applicant is requesting to rezone the site to Planned Area Development with underlying MF twenty-four and a PAD overlay. This overlay will modify some MF twenty-four standards, and also establish some new standards specific to the site, and we'll learn more about that on upcoming slides. And this new zoning will allow the development of a three hundred and eighty-three unit, uh, multifamily community with a density of about twenty-one point eight units per acre. The general plan land use designation is neighborhoods, and this designation is compatible with a variety of residential product types from large lots, single-family homes to multifamily up to eighteen units per acre, or, um, more dense than that in, under certain conditions, such as when it's in a certain overlay or when it's located next to an arterial road. Uh, this site is not located in an overlay, so that does not apply in this case. However, the site is under twenty acres in size, so a general plan amendment is not required to develop it at a density higher than eighteen units per acre. And the applicant has provided a conceptual site plan for, again, three hundred and eighty-three units. There will be seven hundred and forty-six parking spaces. Access will be from both Monte Vista Road and Pebble Creek Parkway. And there will be several amenities, including a clubhouse, pool, barbecue stations, cabanas, outdoor games, a tot lot, and a dog park. And before this project can be constructed, um, the applicant will be required to obtain approval of a site plan from Development Services. And again, this is just a conceptual site plan for now. Uh, tonight, we are just considering the rezone request. Main access to the project will be from Monte Vista Road, this is at the southwest corner of the site. There will be two gates for secure access to the interior areas of the project. Those are the blue lines shown on this diagram. And there will be a small number of parking spaces outside of the gates for visitors. The driveway into the development will be approximately a hundred and forty-two feet long, and there will also be some queuing space in front of the gates. So vehicle backup should not be an issue. However, the applicants are proposing a deceleration lane on Monte Vista to alleviate, uh, neighbor concerns about backups into Monte Vista. And the specific design of that will be finalized through the site plan process. Secondary access will be from Pebble Creek Parkway near the northeast corner of the site via Harvard Street. This is a private driveway with reciprocal access for both Pisern and for Village at Harvard Crossing, which is the multifamily development to the north. It's signalized at its intersection with Pebble Creek Parkway. And there are, uh, dedicated right turn and left turn lanes into the private driveway from Pebble Creek. There will be a gate at this entrance as well, again, that's the blue line shown in the diagram. Um, all vehicles will be able to use this gate to leave the site. Only residents and emergency vehicles will be able to use this gate to get into the site. So the applicant is proposing some changes to the typical MF twenty-four design standards, uh, development standards for building setbacks and heights. There will be reduced north or rear building setback. Instead of thirty feet, it will be twenty feet. However, uh, no three-story buildings will be allowed within certain buffers of the north property line, the west property line, and the southwest corner of the property. And these standards were chosen to be mindful of the surrounding single-family and lower-density multifamily developments. And you can see on this exhibit, any building that's shown in yellow will be a two-story building. Um, all remaining residential buildings could be as tall as three stories. Some of the amenity buildings, such as the clubhouse, will be one story. And the applicant is also proposing some changes to landscape and open space standards. There will be increased tree plantings in the landscape buffer along the west property line. Instead of spacing them thirty feet apart, the trees will need to be, um, no more than twenty feet apart on average. The applicant is proposing to reduce the private open space requirement from sixty square feet to fifty-two square feet per unit. However, they are increasing the shared open space requirement from four hundred square feet per unit to four hundred and eight, so it's a comparable difference. And specific amenities will be programmed, including a public trail along both street frontages. And the applicant is also proposing some specific window design standards to help preserve privacy and aesthetics for the neighbors. Um, anti-glare window treatments and clear-story window designs will be used, uh, for some windows depending on the floor level, the direction the window is facing, and proximity to shared property lines. And this picture shows, shows an example of a clear-story window. Um, just in case, uh, you need to know what that would be. It's basically a window near the ceiling for privacy. A neighborhood meeting was held for this project on February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four. Approximately twenty-nine people attended. Topics discussed include density, traffic, parking, landscaping and amenities, ingress and egress, um, a timing of city approvals, and expected rental prices for the units. Staff have also received four emails about the project. Three were received early on during the review process and expressed opposition. The fourth email was received last Friday and expressed support. Many of the proposed design standards in the PAD overlay were designed with all of these concerns in mind. Additionally, Aguafria High School District has requested that the applicant contribute fees to help mitigate impacts to their school district, so the applicant will be working on that with the district. Uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing was held on August thirteenth. Again, three members of the public spoke in opposition to the project. Uh, concerns expressed were traffic, privacy, and impacts to property values. Two additional people filled out speaker cards to express opposition but did not speak. Um, I do want to say that one of the speakers at Planning and Zoning Commission who expressed opposition was the same person who later sent an email expressing support for the project. Um, Planning and Zoning Commission did vote four to two to recommend approval of the project with one member absent. And notices for the neighborhood meeting and for this public hearing were all provided as required by state and local law. Staff recommends approval of the proposed rezone from PAD to PAD with underlying MF twenty-four and a PAD overlay. And I'm available for questions, and I believe the applicant is here as well.
Thank you. Uh, is the applicant, uh, at this time, want to do a presentation? If that's yes, you got, you got, you got ten minutes.
Thank you, sir. Get that pulled up here. Oh, it's going back down on me. I think, there you go. There you go. All right, there it is. Thank you, Mayor, for your record. I'm Taylor Earl with the Law Firm of Earl and Curly, here on behalf of the Pacern family. I want to tell you just a little bit about the Pacern family. Um, because, you know, as they come into the community, I want everybody to make sure that they know them. They're actually already in the community, just a couple of miles to the north have a, a facility up there. Uh, family-owned company based in Arizona. Uh, they're in their third generation of family ownership. In fact, the lead that we've been working with is the great grandson of the founders. So if, if the city or if neighbors need to reach out to somebody, this isn't some entity far away, this is somebody that's close and local. Um, and they are long-term holders, makes a big difference when we talk about maintenance and pride of ownership. In fact, just up the street a couple of miles, uh, they just recently put in one point five million dollars of reinvestment into that property and are planned on having over five million more dollars of reinvestment over the next few years as people cycle out of the units. And so they really take care in their properties, and I think it's gonna be a great partner for the city. So this property's been owned by the Pacern family for sixteen years, and it's currently zoned multifamily, which I think is really critical. Here's a little bit of the history of that. So where you see in color, that is the zoning case that happened at the time. And this was just one of the properties within that larger zoning case. And so the, the homes to the west and the southwest of us were part of that zoning case. You can see what the property looked like at the time and the year that that zoning case occurred, right? There wasn't development. So again, already zoned, it was at the time zoned, uh, high-density residential, which has been later interpreted for MF eighteen. So let me give you an overview. So we are requesting to rezone from multifamily to multifamily. Um, we're upgrading the quality of the project from what was previously envisioned for the site many years ago in that time. Uh, or when the site plan was approved, I should say. Stipulating to enhanced design, uh, stipulating to resort-level amenities, we're stipulating to increased landscape buffers. Staff mentioned to put the trees closer together, restricting heights and views to neighbors, and we're only having sixty-eight units over what the zoning would allow. So effectively, what we're saying is from a zoning that doesn't have all the restrictions to putting in all the protections and restrictions and design enhancements, that is what the city is getting with this upgraded zoning. So, give you an example, this was sort of the, the quality of the project and the original proposal, which Pacern stands behind, it's a good quality product. But they're doing their Level Twenty-five here, which is just an upgraded product, a completely different level, so great quality would come into this site. Give you another example of what that looks like. Again, these are photographs of Level Twenty-five product that Pacern has already built. Uh, this is some of that open space, we have resort-level amenities, again, a quality project for this location. Some of the open space areas that we envision having a lot of grass and amenities, things like a dog park, gaming areas, outdoor kitchen, shade Ramada, things of that nature. So let me walk you through a timeline that's relevant. So we first submitted our rezoning application, April two thousand and twenty-two, and our third submittal in October twenty twenty-three. Now, this was the time in which we kind of negotiated against ourselves. We put changes on the project, we worked with staff, they asked for changes. We made a lot of modifications to the project. Before we ever took it to the community, we wanted to be able to say, here's why we chose these things, and here's the way that we've protected you. So during that time, we took time to really refine the project, bake in protections to it. Then we held a special meeting for the Portalis residents to our west. Uh, and then we created a website with a lot of information the neighbors could look into if they wanted to. We then held a formal neighborhood meeting in February of twenty-four. We had a lot of onsite meetings, I met with, in the driveway, I met that same woman in her backyard, multiple phone calls with her. We reached out to the newsletter person for Portalis, they could spread it to their residents, and then had, uh, other communications. And then ultimately, we did a fourth and fifth submittal in February and March of this year. So after we met with the neighbors, we made additional changes to the project to further protect. From the context, this area has multifamily, it's got a lot of commercial, we know that. Retail, good retail, needs rooftops. Um, but we also recognize a single family that came into our west and our southwest, so let me show you how we've protected that. So again, in the, in the yellow, orange, gold, you have two stories. So we took the two-story, made sure that the perimeter of the site on the west and on the north, where we were restricting the heights of those buildings to put in a buffer between us and the neighbors. Uh, and then we had big setbacks, so between the rear yard, uh, property line of those homes to the two-story components, you have a hundred and fifteen, a hundred and thirty-four. When you get to a hundred, the third-story component there, it's a hundred and sixty-three. Uh, we have sort of these angled buildings with additional space here at the bottom, so we have big increased setbacks. Um, in fact, if you had two-story homes or two-story buildings, they would normally be allowed to be a little further west. Uh, with the exception of down in the southwest corner, but we have that additional, uh, open space area to the west baked in. Uh, we did the increased tree buffer, again, standard is thirty feet, one tree every thirty feet, we have one tree every twenty feet. So as we put those trees closer together, the canopies grow together, it creates a better privacy can, privacy canopy. We took a drone shot, and we looked at it, put our project into it with our trees being proposed and the trees that are there, and showed that there'd be a lot of trees. In fact, as we showed this to the neighbors, they said, you know, some of those trees have died up close. And so we have offered to replace those trees, the HOA can take that money and install and replace trees that were lost. Then as you get to the third-story component, what we've done is put in clear-story windows. I know that when I do infill development, a big concern is privacy into my back, views into my backyard. So what we did is we took those third-story windows, or the windows to the third-story component, and we raised them up to that clear-story level, so you don't have that regular window sort of looking out due west. And you can see how we've done that on these different buildings where I've color-coded it so you can see. And then here, where we have, uh, the third-story building kind of looking southwest, it's got a further distance before it gets to a home. And then the building in the southwest was a two and three-story building, but as we met with the neighbors closest to that, uh, they expressed concern, and so we just eliminated those extra units, brought the whole thing down to two-story, uh, reduced units in order to do that. They also had a concern about some glare that might be off of those windows, thinking it might bounce, so we said, okay. Um, if the window is recessed into the balcony, that's a little different, but if it's not recessed, then we'll do an anti-glare treatment on those windows. Um, the neighbors who asked for that were in the southwest, but we just continued that all the way up the western side. Thought if they have a concern, probably other neighbors were too, and so we went ahead and did that. Um, they had asked us about a wall extension, so we are extending the perimeter wall. We answered that question, bringing that wall down, matching the style of the, the wall that's there. Um, as staff mentioned, there was a concern about the deceleration lane, they wanted us to add one. Um, our traffic study didn't call for it, the city didn't require it, but we're doing it because it's something that the neighbors were concerned about, and so we put it into the project. Uh, there was also previously the northeast corner was an exit, but it wasn't an entrance. And the concern from the neighbors was, well, that means all the trips are coming in off of Monte Vista. So we went back and we worked with staff, and we made that a resident entrance, so residents can now come in. So now, as you have trips coming to the site, you're effectively splitting them and taking far less trips off of Monte Vista. So that was something we did, uh, after feedback from the neighbors. Some off-site commitments that aren't part of stipulations, but I'm putting them on the record today because we agreed to do these with the neighbors. Uh, one is there was a concern about having people use that HOA walkway. And so we said, look, some of your neighbors may not want to get that, some of them might. We will put money towards constructing it, and then the, the HOA can decide if that's something that they'd want, but we're sort of paving, we're doing our part, uh, to protect that. And then I mentioned earlier, funding some trees over in that section that were, that were lost. We have a walking trail on the outside, which not only our residents, but the public, members of these communities would be able to use. Um, so features of that, we have benches with shade trees. We have trees on both sides of the trail, these are stipulated where possible, we have trees on both sides, provide nice shade. And then we have access points into the community to make it truly a walkable-type community. Um, if here's the perspective looking from Monte Vista, looking north. I'll highlight just a few things. We really worked with staff on the elevations, uh, to put some color in, so it wasn't just grays. We weren't using the modern lines, we were trying to match what was already out there in the community. You can see there's a lot of front-to-back movement with the elevations, there's a lot of articulation around the windows, our roof structures, we really tried to put design into it so that it would fit, uh, into the fabric of the community. And you can see sort of in the horizon back in the deep where you have some of the, the pitched roofs. Um, and so we have a stipulation that talks about roof styles and pitched roofs and other elements that match kind of what's going on in the neighborhood beyond us. So at the end of the day, you have existing zoning, already multifamily, allows three hundred and fifteen units. And then we're coming in and saying, okay, we're gonna ask for three eighty-three, but we're gonna give a lot of protections, a lot of upgrades, and a lot of things. And so you're going from one multifamily to another, but you're putting in a lot of protections and a lot of upgrades and make sure this is a quality project. Um, we know that retail development follows rooftops. And with the city bringing in its downtown, that's obviously a very different condition than existed back in two thousand and five and then two thousand and seven when the original site plan was approved. And so we want to bring in density, we want to do it in the right way, we think we've done that. We think we've brought in density but done it in a smart way, a way that's respectful, uh, of the community to our west. It's also a good site because it's close to the I-ten. As you put in density, and you know you're gonna need density as Goodyear continues to grow, the deeper you put it into suburbia, the more those trips have to travel through the suburban areas to get to the high-capacity corridors. By building it close to the freeway, you now have them on and off of that freeway, and it reduces traffic elsewhere into the city. And then the city has already brought in a lot of employment, expects to bring in more employment in the future. Look at the, where this site is situated amongst all these employment uses. It's very well-positioned amongst the ten to the three oh three, and so it's a great location for that as well. So with that, Mayor, happy to answer any questions.
Right at the time, five seconds to spare, all right? Any speaker cards?
Yes, Mayor. Rob Boswell?
Uh, thank you. My name is Rob Boswell. I am a resident of the community of Portalis, which is immediately to the west of the, uh, lot in question. When I purchased my home in two thousand and thirteen, I was initially told by my builder that that lot was gonna be zoned for one-story offices, but later found out that it was indeed zoned for what could be two-story apartments. Uh, a couple of years ago, um, one-story, single-family units um, were opened in the lot just adjacent to this, this, uh, lot to the north of it. in the lot just adjacent to this, this lot to the north of it. So on the west adjoining community, you have Portalis, it's a gated community, all of the houses on that street, including mine on 156th Drive. Most of them, with the exception of one, are all one-story properties. And then immediately to the north of this, you have another community of one-story, single-family properties. A couple of years ago, so since the time that those one-story properties were open, the northeast corner of Montevista and Pebble Creek, four-story apartments went up. And further to the east of that, more three-story and four-story apartment complexes have gone up. And frankly, as a member who bought, of this community, who bought their house in 2013 because I didn't want to live in Phoenix around a bunch of apartment complex, they're an eyesore, and they're not what people move to Goodyear to live around. The members of the community would obviously prefer single-level rental units to go in on this lot like they did on the immediate properties to the north of this. But understanding that this is already zoned for what could be two-story apartment units, we'd like for this, this zoning to remain as-is. And frankly, the, the members of my community see this rezone as not only just something that's going to have a negative effect on our property values, but a little bit of a slap in the face, if I'm being honest. Georgia Lord was a resident of Portalis, she lived a couple of blocks around the corner from me. If she were alive today, she would not let this happen. I can tell you that. If this rezoning is allowed to happen, I'd like to know, frankly, how the city of Goodyear and where the builder are going to compensate the residents of my community and the residents to the community above them for the effect that this is going to have on our property values. I can tell you for myself personally, if three-story apartment units go in behind me, I'm going to move, and I'm going to take less from my house to do that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other cards?
Jeff Levi submitted a card in opposition, but did not wish to speak.
Okay, anything else? All right, any, whoops.
I didn't realize this was, this was going to be on the agenda, but I'd like to say a few words if possible.
Come on up.
Thank you.
I don't have anything prepared from a marketing point of view, because I'm hearing this for the first time. I was at the February 2024 meeting with a developer. It did not go well. There was many, many concerns expressed by the residents of Portalis as well as other residents in the proximity of where this new apartment complex will go. I believe I'm saying this correctly. The builder at the time recognized all this controversy, all this conflict, very emotional statements were made by the residents. I believe the builder said, we will have a second time to get together and talk about any changes that we're going to propose from this meeting. To my knowledge, that never happened for the, the community of Portalis, nor other communities in the surrounding area. I was trying to absorb everything the developer said about all the changes they made. I don't see anything major. I think it's still remaining at 383 units above the 315, and other changes that they, that I thought they had agreed to make at the meeting, never occurred. I would strongly ask and recommend that the county, the city council not approve this project moving forward until the developer has another meeting with all the residents once again and invites them to challenge the new proposals and keep an open mind for the reasons that this one homeowner has presented.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, Mayor.
All right, with that, anybody else in the audience like to speak? Seeing now, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Will the city clerk please read resolution number 2025-1637 by title only?
Adopt ordinance number 2025-1637, conditionally rezoning approximately 17.55 acres of land located at the northwest corner of Montevista Road and Pebble Creek Parkway from the Palm Valley Phase 8 Planned Area Development to Planned Area Development Zoning District with an underlying zoning district of multifamily MF 24 with a pad overlay, amending the zoning map of the city of Goodyear.
Thank you. Can I get a motion and a second to adopt 2025-1637? I see a motion and a second, let's open it up for discussion. First up is Councilmember Terry.
Yes, I had a couple of questions. I don't know if Ann, you can maybe help me out. Some of them were addressed, I just want to make things quite clear for anyone observing, or, you know, for my benefit as well. This is multifamily zoned currently with the request to, for multifamily with these slight adjustments. Is, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So this is not new multifamily zoning into the city. This is something, to my knowledge, saw the case from 2005, 2007. Do you know when the Portalis homes were built or when those were zoned? I know that's kind of an off question, didn't know if you knew.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Pizzillo and Councilmember Terry. To be honest, I do not know, I'm sorry.
Did you, no, okay. From, from those overhead shots though, I think from 2005, 2007, it did not appear that there were any homes built, or if they were, they were in the process of being built when this was originally zoned. And, you know, I'm, I'm new here, I'm in my, you know, the number keeps getting bigger, but eighth, ninth, ninth month now. And it's something that I always ask when it comes to these zoning requests is, what is the history of the zoning? What is the history of the surrounding zoning? Just to kind of get a feel of decisions that were made, you know, three years ago, five years ago, 20 years ago. The, if there were no zoning change, I saw the site plans expired, but they still would have the ability to, you know, get a site plan and, or get it re-approved and do what was there previously, is that correct?
Yes, Councilmember Terry. They would be able to develop it under the MF 18 zoning, which would allow up to 315 units. But they wouldn't be able to go for the MF 24.
But, but that zoning would not include other buffers that have been requested by some of the neighbors? And I, you know, I do have, as was mentioned, I'm looking at a letter in support about some changes that were made along the way. If, if this was not approved, they could still build? And those buffers would not exist, some, or wouldn't need to exist, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. The current MF 18 zoning allows for a maximum building height of 30 feet. So by default, that would probably be about a two-story building. So it'd be mostly a two-story development. The existing request goes to MF 24, which allows up to a 40-foot building across the site, except that they have the PAD overlay to restrict heights on certain buildings that are close to the shared property lines.
So as part of this request, we are able to enforce those height restrictions when it comes close to the existing neighborhoods, not only to the west, but to the north? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And then, I don't know if this is for you or Mr. Earl, but it's a lot of trees, a lot of green. We get a lot of monsoons, we get some alerts for them, even, you know, in the last 10 minutes. What happens if those go down? And from our standpoint as staff, the, the maintenance, the upkeep of some of that greenery, not only for the internal residents, but for, you know, residents and passerby's, not only in Pebble Creek, Montevista, surrounding neighborhoods, to keep the, keep trees up, is that part of the plan? Is that part of an enforceable plan from our standpoint?
Yes, Councilmember Terry. I, I believe it would be up to the developer to maintain their landscaping. And should anything become damaged, to replace it and fix any damage as it arises. Should it blow into a public right-of-way? To be honest, I'm not sure. If that falls more in the developer or the city, that's something I could find out.
My question in that is, say, a dozen trees were knocked out, and then the place isn't as green, there isn't as much shade. Do we as a city say, hey, this was part of your plan, this was part of your development? Do we have that ability to kind of, for lack of a better term, enforce upkeep? Katie, I don't know if that one's for you.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Terry, yes, we do have the authority to require them to have conformance with the site plan, basically for all time. So if there's a storm that comes through and trees go down, we would go to them and talk about a plan to replace the trees.
And that includes anything on the western edge and the northern edge as well, correct? Okay. At risk of filibustering the whole meeting, I will leave it at that.
All right, then Councilmember Kano.
These kind of cases are always difficult and particularly interesting when you have a lovely community like Portalis that's been there for a long time, and you have the vacant land that this family has held for 16 years, and now it's time to develop. And although the land has been zoned, it's always a big, kind of scary transition when plans start to be made and, and things have been done. I talked with Taylor Earl pretty extensively last week about his community outreach, about all the things. And it, it is, I learned some new things. I had never heard of the clerestory windows before, that was a new concept I learned about. And in my time on council, I haven't ever seen them where we've, people have agreed to anti-glare windows and things like that. They are, they're, the developers taking on significant additional expense that was not required of them, including the decel line, deceleration lane, the secondary access, the, the, moving the second stories farther away and making that nice buffer, and plus the enhanced landscaping as well as contributing to the HOA. And I, I've seen developers make concessions to residents, but never to this extent. And this area, while not on the other side of the street, really is, I would call GSQ adjacent. GSQ is really making an impact. And a big reason for the success we're having is because of the density to fill those restaurants and to come and support the retail as it comes. I also live in a gated community in Palm Valley, and I've had apartments be built by my home, two and three stories, and it is an adjustment. Overall, I have not found the traffic to be an issue because people come and go at different times. And certainly based on my property tax, there's been no change in my, in my property values. But it, it is an adjustment when things go. The, the, the resident who had changed her mind from opposed to being supportive had written to Mayor and City Council, and I sent her a note back. And she responded that she, it was very surprising and refreshing to have a developer so engaged and willing to work with us. And I just want to commend this, this developer for the exceptional work that they've been doing with the community. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you as well. I had a few questions, but yeah, just trying to address Rob, Jeff, and Eric's concerns and questions. But so going back to Councilmember Terry's comments, it sounds like the zoning was pretty close to the time that this was zoned. So the residents there were aware this was going to be multifamily. But it should have been when they bought, when they bought the house. It's been, it's not, it's been rezoned at any time between now and then, it's always a multifamily. And you said the height, could it, could it be a three-story now, that, on the zoning?
Thank you, Mayor Pizzillo and Councilmember Hampton. The current zoning doesn't have a specific story limit. The MF 18 zoning does have a maximum height limit of 30 feet, which I don't believe you'd be able to squeeze three stories into that. So probably two stories just by default. So yeah, the new zoning would raise that to 40 feet, so it would allow for a third story. And then the PAD overlay places restrictions on where the third-story buildings could go, the three-story buildings.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like it, history's there that it was multifamily. It sounds like they're getting a little bit more space or away from the residents, which I think is, is very, very good for the residents that they thought it was going to be two, and the ones that are closest to them are going to be two-story, with some, some three-story in there. But it's a graduated density where it goes from single-story potential houses up to two-story houses, and then apartments up to three-story, to then across the streets, three and four stories over there, so.
That's true.
So I think the density makes sense to me for that. I appreciate the different access points, all the concessions to the residents. There's been lots of meetings, as we saw in the, the attorney's presentation here. So I like that they did a lot of community outreach to the entire community, not just Portalis, but also south there. Where the resident who sent the email to us to change their opinion on the, on the project went from no to yes, and they're just south there as well. So I do appreciate all the extra things that have gone far, far beyond what I've ever seen any other developer or, or project do. So, so yeah, so I'll, I'll be definitely, I'll be voting on this because it's already multifamily, and we're going to multifamily and making it nicer with all the extra concessions. Because if we didn't, it could, they could build this tomorrow, to a bunch of ones that are closer, closer to the residents, not the decel line, not a ticket entrance, and they could slap it up tomorrow without all these extra amenities that they're providing for the community, with all the extra trees that aren't even on their property. So that they're able to provide to Portalis and the surrounding community as well. So yeah, with that, I'll be voting for it, but thank you for the clarification on my questions.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Is this development going to be a gated community?
Thank you, Mayor Pizzillo and Councilwoman Campbell. Yes, there will be gates at both the Montevista and the Pebble Creek entrances.
Okay. Well, to be absolutely honest with the developer and the residents, I'm really opposed to more multifamily housing in Goodyear, we have plenty. However, this zoning was done long before I ever came on council, and they have a right to develop that land. And that's the problem when you're trying to plan your city out 15, 20, 30 years out. Things change. And the Portalis community began to be built in 2006. And T.W. Lewis built in 2000 some of the homes, but it really started taking off in 2006. Because I moved in in 2000, and there weren't but one or two homes there. And then if, they really started building it out in 2010. So it's almost like, I live in Pebble Creek, and yes, 303 is coming down beside Pebble Creek. We were told that when we built our, our home 25 years ago, but it never dawned on us that we would even hear the noise, because I'm far away from it. But unfortunately, I, I think, I wish there was a way that the developer could meet one more time if it is that important to those residents. Because we've only gotten one letter of support that I know of, that I received personally from that community. And I know that, that their concern is about the multifamily. If it had been originally zoned as single-family, I don't think there would have been anything said, to be honest. And I understand what they're, they're wanting to do, and I sympathize with them. And it's a tough decision, it really is. But I don't know if it would do any good to meet with the residents one more time because they, they're not here to tell us that they don't want us to approve this. So, thank you, that's, that's it.
Councilwoman Benita.
Okay. So I am also new to council. This project, as Councilmember Terry was saying, was started and zoned prior to us being on the council. I also met with the developer and, and looked at their changes and thought it was very noble of them to go out to bring about these changes. My question is, for the western border, how many houses are we talking about on that western border? I know we've done a lot of I know we've done a lot of things to buffer that area, but how many houses are we talking about on the western border?
Ah, yes, Mayor Pacillo and Councilmember Beckles. I believe it looks to be about 10 to 12 houses per the aerial photo in Portalis along the west property line.
Have there been any complaints on the northern end to that developer, to the property over there?
To my knowledge, no.
Okay. Since this was developed, was already zoned, as everyone has said way prior to, as multifamily, and since the developer has reached, has gone over and above to satisfy and to provide buffers, and I think that we could be looking at a really nice project coming up to, to be part of the city, even with the concerns of the other property. That's all.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Gillis.
I would like to speak with Taylor, please.
Okay.
Hi, Taylor. And I just want to recap a couple of things so that we're all on the same page. Things I think I heard you say, but I'm not sure. So correct me if I'm wrong. So what we're talking about is the original zoning for this was in 2005, correct? So that's before any of us were on, on here. And it was for multi-level family, right? Okay. Current zoning was April in '22.
When we first applied for this zoning, yes, ma'am.
Yes, because that's when I first came on council, and I remember this project coming to us. This is one of the original multi-level zoning projects from back in 2005. Always multi-level family from beginning, updated 2005 to 2025. Am I correct on that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So the first application of this particular project to come back to us was April of '22.
Yes, ma'am.
When I first came on, that I heard.
I will take your word on the second, on your record on when you got on council, but I can answer the first part, yes.
I know about that. Okay. All right, so here's my deal, is that we have been dealing with this for this long. That's a lot of years that we've been trying to get this going. This is a higher-end project, which is really good actually that we're doing it now for the state of the city and where we're at, because we weren't at the position where we're at back then. And the thing that we have to understand is that this project has been perfected with our staff. It's been taking our staff and you to get together to be doing all this with the developer during all this time, too. I think you guys have taken great care, and I give the developer a lot of credit, for taking the great care of the expense and all the things that you're upgrading to, because I have not seen that with anybody else in a long time. I know that you have been doing that. I've seen it come back and forth and what you've been talking about. The accesses, I mean, that's, that's a major, big deal. What people don't understand, because I didn't even understand before I got on council, was that retail and restaurants have, they have to have the density. You have to have the rooftops, you have to have the people. And if you don't have it, everything stops. You don't get it. It's why we didn't get a lot of stuff in the beginning, because we did not have the density. We know businesses that wanted to come in and be a part of our, our community, and they backed out. So that's what you don't understand in the beginning. I think that's the issue. The other thing is, is that, am I not mistaken? Now, let me know if I'm wrong, because I thought you and I were actually talking on the phone during this time. Didn't you have a second meeting? I thought you did, just recently.
So we had, we had our, we did, you're only required to have a general neighborhood meeting.
Right.
That got noticed, and we actually reached out to staff and said, before we do the general meeting, let's cancel that. We want to meet with Portalis first. They're the most impacted community. We want to have a special meeting with their HOA, and then we will have the general meeting. And so that's what we did. We met with the HOA of Portalis, and they'd noticed their residents. We had that meeting. And then we also held a general neighborhood meeting in which we had residents that came from the southwest, which is a different HOA, and also met with those residents. And then we had individual meetings and follow-up conversations with individuals.
And one of those meetings was just recently, wasn't it?
We had with several neighbors on the southwest, we had a Zoom meeting at the end of June, and then had follow-up communications with the woman who came to plan a commission.
That's what I thought. That's why I wanted to make it very clear when it was stated that they didn't think you did that. You did do it. And so that's what I wanted, it's not like you were trying to ignore people. You were putting it out there, and you did have the meeting. And so that, that is what I'm talking about. I think it's something also, I'm, am I correct in what I'm, what I'm saying here, though? Am I following the plan pretty good here?
Yeah, correct. And again, I don't know what meeting was being referred to, but we did hold two neighborhood meetings, and we tried to make ourselves very accessible through this entire process, and put information on our website so that people could adhere to it, so that there was open communication. We really wanted to make sure that people knew, just because the meeting was over, it wasn't an exploding offer to talk to us. They could always reach back out, understand the plans.
Right. Nobody's bullying anybody. We're trying to, to be fair with everybody. So here's my thing, is that when this was started back in 2005, and now it's back up to '25, you know, and we've been, you've been trying with our staff to, to perfect everything that's going on. It would be unfair not to let this go through, because you've been working on this with a developer, and it's been going this whole time. We have to continue to remember when this was started, and these, these other developments were possibly not there at the time, or they weren't in completion at the time, or whatever. But this is what you guys have been doing for this long. And I guess my, I'm curious, maybe with staff, and maybe someone could explain to me, because this is some of the stuff we've been trying to talk about, is why it takes three years from '22 to '25 for a single zoning update? Does anybody have any, any answers to that?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Gillis. I don't have all the details on the case, but there was a time when the applicant paused and waited on the resubmital, partly because they were working with the residents and trying to work through the site plan.
How long was that pause for, Katie?
I can look it up and get that to you. I can get you the full case history after this, in the in-out on the project, and I'd be happy to follow up with all of that.
That would be great, because those are the kind of things I, like Councilman Terry was talking about. I mean, it really has to do with how long this has been in effect, and who was there at the time and what was going on. We can't blame the people that have been trying to bring this in from 2005, and now all of a sudden, everybody's up in the air, when we actually need this for, for the things that we're trying to bring in retail and restaurants.
Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Thank, I'm not done.
You're not done?
Thank you, Taylor. I appreciate you answering those questions. And I just wanted to be sure that we were on the same page in all this.
Yes, ma'am. And if I can just say to staff, I do think that we, there were times where we wanted to meet with the neighborhood. When you have a case that's in escrow, there usually are timelines and pressures that make it sometimes difficult to have that extended period. Our client, when we met with some neighbors, said, thank you so much for coming. And I said, I appreciate your thanking me. The client's the one paying me. If they weren't authorizing me to be here, I couldn't take the time. So when we told, said, hey, we're going to work with the neighbors. We're going to go through this extended period. And there was a neighbor that we worked with that got sick for a couple of months. There were several times. And so we just, the client let us say, you know what, let's just wait. Let's just wait. Let's just wait. So, so I want to be clear, as with staff, was great to work with, and we, we really did a lot of work together. A lot of those delays were us just saying, we're going to do this the right way. All right, we're going to do it the right way with the neighbors.
And I do commend you for, because I know about that. I commend you for working with that, with that neighbor, because she was sick. And so I think it was nice that you guys did that, because you didn't have to do that. Just like all the extra things that you're adding to this that most developers do not, they don't have to add. And some, most don't, actually. And so I commend the developer and you for sticking with it for this long. And I commend staff for doing what they've done. But three years, we've got to work on that. Thank you very much for everything.
I have a question for Taylor. Taylor, when do you plan, when does the family plan to even break ground on this? It's my understanding, there's no plans in the near future to do anything other than you just want to get this zoning done so that if and when it's ever ready, market-wise, you're going to move on it. Did that, did I understand you correctly?
Yeah, we don't, I don't have a timeline, and the developers here could speak to sort of that part of it, because I don't want to go outside of my level of knowledge and risk speak. But what I can tell you is that we have talked about where the market's at, and making sure that we're not just building something because we got the entitlements, let's just build it. But making sure, hey, is the market there? So that when we build it, because after 100 years of doing business, they know to make sure they don't build something that goes bacon, or that we have to depress the rents, because now we got to fill it up. And so they're going to make sure, is we have supply in Goodyear, is that starts to be consumed? And we make sure that, I think the area near downtown is going to rebound faster, because you may have paper entitlements three miles away, but this is the creme de la creme. This is the area. So absolutely, they will be watching market. I always say zoning is first, but financing is second. Nobody wants to spend money and build something unless they know it's going to be good.
I understand that. And I just wanted the, the public that may be hearing this, it's somewhat concerned. It's not going to be built tomorrow. It's not going to be built next week. It's not going to be probably built this year or next year. And that's why it takes so long. When these things were approved in 2005, nobody moved on it. And look, 20 years later, someone finally is going to develop that property. So we thank you for doing that. I just wish it was quicker, but I understand the market, and I understand not wanting to spend money when it's not there. And we certainly do not want you to build it and have it stay empty. That's even worse. So, thanks very much.
Councilwoman Hampton?
Yeah, just one more last question. So if this gets sold, this might be for staff, if this gets sold tomorrow, you guys, we approve this. It gets sold tomorrow, these stipulations all carry to the next, the next user, correct?
The answer to your question is yes, but there are no plans to sell it. But, but you're saying, hey, what crazy things happen.
For the resident's sake, like, hey, oh, man, they're going to, someone could, they could sell it tomorrow, and all these things go away. These carry, that's why.
They run with the land, yes, yes, sir. If anybody wanted to come back and change the things we're being stipulated to, they would have to come back through a public hearing process to do that.
Yeah, so we're getting the upgrade no matter who, who potentially owns it. But this is not getting sold, like you said, as a private family. But it's just for the care of the public, so they know, they know that this stuff carries, so.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Yeah, to, to me, the key, unfortunately, it is already zoned residential. If you just let that go, you could actually build something on here that probably would actually detract from Portalis, as opposed to putting something quality on that site. That's the problem. You know, so the fact that all of these improvements and amenities have been added, I think is going to add to the area, not detract. As opposed that if they just went ahead and, and did the base, you wouldn't have all these amenities around there. So with that, can you go ahead and open it up for a vote? Passes 7-0. Thank you. Next public hearing is to consider a use permit for a convenience store with a gas station. Open public hearing. Kyle, please introduce yourself to the public.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Kyle Abbott, Senior Planner. This is a use permit request for a new Terrible's convenience store and gas station in Goodyear. The proposed Terrible's convenience store and gas station is approximately 1.29 acres. The project is proposed to go just north of the commercial center called Pebble Creek Plaza. The center includes a 24-hours Federico's drive-through restaurant with a use permit approved by City Council in October 2020. The applicant proposes an approximately 5,200-square-foot convenience store with an approximately 2,700-square-foot fuel canopy area, providing a gasoline, providing four gasoline-fueling pumps that can serve up to eight vehicles at a time. The customer would have write-in and write-out access onto the property from Pebble Creek Parkway, write-in and write-out access from Virginia Avenue, plus access onto the property from an existing Pebble Creek Plaza drive aisle. There is an active and accessible traffic light at the south end of Pebble Creek Plaza. Upon arrival at the property, customers will have the option of using one of the 27 parking spaces and entering the convenience store or heading to the fuel pump area. The proposed building elevations include colors and materials consistent with the colors and materials palette of Pebble Creek Plaza. And the height from ground to the highest point of the building is approximately 30.8 feet, which is well below the maximum height allowed in C2 zoning districts. Fuel canopy elevations include roofline undulation and masonry columns. Staff evaluated the proposed development with use permit and convenience use criteria provided in the zoning ordinance. The use is similar to other uses approved in the rest of the center, which include a 24-hour drive-through restaurant. The nearest residents are Evolution at Estrella Falls Apartments, which are 120 feet to the east and separated from the proposed development by the RID Canal. We had a neighborhood meeting. One member of the public attended the meeting in support of the project. One member of the public sent an email stating their concern about neon lights and bright signage. All outdoor signage on the property is required to conform to the standards established in Article 10, outdoor lighting standards, as well as all signage to comply with Article 7, sign regulations. On August 13, Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing. One resident spoke in support of the project. Planning and Zoning Commission voted 6 to 0 to recommend conditional approval of this use permit. One member of the public sent an email following Planning and Zoning, expressing concern about the appropriateness of the location and concern about increased eastbound traffic and U-turns as a result of the write-out movement from the property on Virginia Avenue. Please note, city traffic engineers have reviewed the project's traffic impact analysis, and their approval is required as a part of the use permit site plan process. Mayor and Council, this concludes my presentation. The applicant is present and available, if you desire, to answer your questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does he, does he want to speak now, or is he going to wait to see if we got any questions from you?
I think if you have questions.
Why don't you hold it, see if we get any questions for you, okay? With that, any speaker cards?
Yes, Mayor, we have Jeff Levy submitted a speaker card in support of the project, but does not wish to speak.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Okay. Anybody in the audience like to speak on this particular one? Okay, with that, I'm going to close the public hearing. With the city, with the council, please enter a motion as second to approve the use permit request for a convenience use store with a gas station, proposed on approximately 1.29-acre property zone C2, general commercial located at the southeast corner of West Virginia Avenue and North Pebble Creek Parkway, open for council discussion. First one up is Vice Mayor.
So Kyle, you haven't been with us long enough, so it may be up to Katie. But is this the old KFC location? This goes back 20 years ago. Do you think?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. You stumped me on that one.
I'm sorry. I'm so sorry.
It's the very, very top part of that triangle piece.
I think that was going to be at one time KFC, when I first moved into town, but it didn't happen. So the building that they are proposing will be shorter than the Groves, which will be across the street. Is that correct?
Shorter than the what?
The Groves. Height. Katie, yes.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Campbell. It is shorter than the Groves.
Great. Do we know who or where the person lives that was concerned about the lighting? Because the way those lights are, those lights are going to be facing down on the ground, and there's no apartments at the end of the Groves, because there's no windows on Virginia Street.
Yeah, the resident lived in the single-family residential neighborhood just northeast of this project. So that would be to the east of the assisted living facility.
Got it. Okay, fine, thank you. I think it's a good use of that land, and I'm looking forward to having it come into the neighborhood.
Got it?
Yeah, thank you.
Let's see, Councilmember Hampton?
Yeah, thank you. So yeah, I just also want to verify the light. Is it digital sign package for that area, or is it going to be?
Signage is not approved with the use permit or the site plan itself. But the sign regulations would prohibit exposed light sources. So that whatever light sources are proposed as a part of the sign building- So that whatever light sources are proposed as a part of the sign building permit applications will have to ensure that the light source is shielded.
Okay, good. Yeah, I know my, my grandma lives at the Groves right there. So I was curious what that's going to look like for those residents there. So, um, and then where's, where's the nearest Terrible's? Is this their first location in Arizona?
I will open this to the applicant to address the number of locations or where they may be in Arizona.
I mean, it's an interesting name. I tried looking up online. I couldn't find like their history or anything like that. So real quick, like, but I was just curious. If, yeah, I, I, I don't know, maybe the applicant wants to say hi, so about that.
It is a brand from Las Vegas, Nevada.
Is it from Vegas? Is it the closest? I don't know.
Yeah, no, if you drive through Las Vegas, you will see, um, their signage, their shops everywhere.
Yeah, alright.
Hello, uh, my name is Brett Griffin. I'm a Development Manager with Terrible's. We're a family-owned and operated convenience store company going back sixty-five plus years. We're based down in Las Vegas and we're making a push to open about forty to fifty stores in the Phoenix metro. So this would be probably our third store if approved.
Yeah, I was just curious how, how you guys were in the mix there, where your guys' product was compared to maybe some other users in the area.
Yeah, if I had to compare us, it would be on par with QT in terms of the quality, the offering. The family takes a lot of pride in what they build and operate. They're long-term holders. They're not looking to flip sites or sell out in the next ten years. They're going to own and operate them going forward.
And I saw some of the artwork that was on some of them. Is that going to be, is that the culture of the, of it, or is it going to be artwork like the Vegas locations, like?
A lot like the Vegas. They are deliberately different. That's what they take pride in to differentiate themselves between Circle K and QT. So.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I was curious about. I just, yeah, welcomed, I mean, just the community. I just never, I'd never been to one. I was just curious. It sounded like it was a new product offering here in Arizona.
Yeah, so our first store is under construction at twenty-third Ave in Northern, and then our second site will be Olive and Seventy-first Ave. We have sites in Santan Valley, uh, let's see, Mesa, Buckeye. We're going to be far and wide. We're excited to come here.
Yeah, it looks like you guys were good community partners, do a lot of things in the community as well.
Yeah, they take a lot of pride in helping out vets, um, doing a lot of work for police, uh, Toys for Tots, very active in the school communities, K through twelve. So we're excited to be partners in the community.
Yeah. No, great. Thank you so much.
No problem.
And my last question is really just on the traffic and trying to address the, uh, residents' concern about the traffic there. So the right in, right out, I think that's fine. And you did, there, you'd say there is a path to get to the light that's near, uh, through that parking lot right there. So I hope people would use that as opposed to going down. They might get, a few people get stuck in the beginning where they gotta go take a right out. I don't know how far the first you can take a U-turn even to get back to Pebble Creek Parkway along that road there. I think that's the concern is that so many people just trying to take U-turns. How far, how far? I need to scan out my, my map here. How far down Virginia before it actually would? It's like a decel into the community right there, right? People might potentially be taking. I see the decel starting right there, so. But the apartment complex is right across the way. So I think it's the same entrance right there.
No, you're correct. Based on the location of the property, their only options were right in, right out on both Pebble Creek and Virginia. Um, the nearest functioning light is going to be south of the location shown on the screen now at the moment. Um, it is actually the same intersection, um, that you would use to enter Village at Harvard Crossing.
Yeah, Harvard. Is there anything we need to do for, I don't know, I'm sure there's been a traffic study. I'm just trying to imagine people, if they're going to use that light. I don't want to affect the businesses that are going to be. I think we just open, cut a ribbon for the, the med spa that's right there, things like that. Is there any, I don't know if we need to put a speed bump in that area just as people backing in and out of those spots, they're using those shops there. I don't know if that's going to be an issue or not. I'm not sure. Hopefully they'll be hugely successful. It'd be a huge line to get in there, but I just want to make sure that the other users down there, I don't know what that would look like, if they even needs to be and things like that. Maybe I'm just making up a problem. Uh, but I just trying to look out for the business, all other business owners that might be sharing. Cause I know when I'm trying to get out of parking spot, if I'm, there's a car, a bunch of car traffic coming out, it's hard to get out of that, hard to get out of that spot there. So also make sure those businesses are going to be successful too, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Hampton.
Maybe a note, maybe something to look into when we're, as the project develops, just to say they're good neighbors to the other users in that, that same plaza.
And to clarify, as far as what you would like additional information on, I understand you're concerned about, um, getting out of the site and perhaps folks speeding going south on the drive aisle.
Just trying to get out to the, then take the right out to get to the Pebble Creek light. So that's, I'm just worried about the, the, well, the Federico's will be busy too, but also those two little users that are right there before the light.
Yeah, it's certainly a discussion. We can continue.
I want staff to just keep an eye on that. So, so it's like, I'm not going to not approve it because of that. I just want staff to just keep an eye on it for me. Um, I think that's it. So that I have, um, yeah, I'm excited to have something, something new, new, uh, new to the city and something unique and and I think this area would definitely would like to have a gas station there. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hampton.
Councilor McCarren?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, Kyle, I have a familiar question here. Uh, the C two zoning, do we know when that was originally, um, put forward? Or have kind of concept, is this going to be around that same two thousand five timeframe that we're talking about?
You are right on the spot. The current C two general commercial zoning was approved in two thousand six.
Okay, two thousand six. So right in the window. And, um, just for the public, what are some of the general things that can go into C two?
Yeah. C two general commercial is our most permissive commercial zoning districts. Um, so a wide range of uses, including, um, restaurants, retail, office, would all be permissible at this location.
Okay, and, um, you know, I'm through that area quite a bit. My, I think the only other gas station there on Pebble Creek is, uh, right along the I ten, is that a Circle K? Um, you have to go, you know, a couple, couple miles over for, so to me, it makes sense. Uh, twenty years ago, this could have easily been, um, a gas station. We've just seen the population grow since two thousand six. So, uh, to me, it makes sense. I just always like to ask on the genesis of its zoning. So I appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilmember Terry.
Well, we've talked about other, uh, convenience stores, um, possibility of them siding differently, like the back to the front, and that's what we've done here. So this is a pretty unique project for us. And, uh, if I look at the elevations, I just wanted to help, help, uh, on your fifth slide. Um, there's a east elevation, a west elevation. The west elevation will be facing Pebble Creek. Is that correct?
The east elevation would be facing Pebble Creek. There would also be landscaping in between the building and Pebble Creek itself.
Okay. The east elevation, doesn't that face, um, where the canopies are? Okay.
You're right. I misspoke. It is our west elevation. There will be landscaping between that west elevation and Pebble Creek as well as along the north side of the property facing Virginia.
Yes, I, I looked. You've got a pretty extensive, uh, landscaping, um, plan. So I'm wondering about deliveries and dock doors. Uh, is that on the south elevation where, uh, those doors are? Is that where that will be happening?
Yeah, I will allow the applicant to speak to operations as far as how these deliveries tend to be handled at Terrible's.
Mayor and Council, my name's Jeff Kosky. I'm with Arch, Archon Architects. We're in Phoenix. Um, just to answer that question, yeah, deliveries, deliveries generally go through the front door of Terrible's. Um, they just bring small products in through, through the front door typically. So there is a door on the side that will allow deliveries there to you, but mostly it's through the front door.
Okay. I think I just wanted to be sure we weren't running trucks in the back
No.
between, uh, Pebble, you know, in view of Pebble Creek. So, okay, very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Got anything else? With that, um, let's see, um, where we at? Uh, we're ready for the vote then, right? Go ahead and open it up. Passes seven zero. Thank you. Final public hearing is to consider a use permit for a car wash. Let's open the public hearing.
Mayor, Council, I'm Kyle Abbott, Senior Planner. This is a use permit request for a new Superstar Car Wash in Goodyear. The subject property is located east of the southeast corner of North one hundred and sixty-sixth Avenue and West Indian School Road. The property is shown on the screen in yellow. The property is zoned PAD, Planned Area Development, and has an underlying C two general commercial zoning. It is part of the PV three oh three PAD, which was originally zoned in the year two thousand eight. The property is also within Luke Air Force Base's sixty-five D and L. The proposed Superstar Car Wash site is approximately one point two six acres. The project is proposed to go in a commercial center called The Triangle at PV three oh three. A master site plan for the center delineating the plan for circulation and services was approved by staff in February twenty twenty-three. Shown in red outline on the screen is the area covered by that master site plan. The triangle is northwest of Pebble Creek Community Pickleball Recreation and RV Storage. The center includes a Filiberto's Drive-Thru Restaurant with use permit approved by City Council in April twenty twenty-one and a Quick Trip Convenience Store and Gas Station with use permit approved in July twenty twenty-four. The applicant proposes an approximately four thousand square foot car wash facility with three pay stations for customers to use without getting out of the vehicle, twenty-two queuing spaces leading up to the pay stations, as well as seventeen self-serve vacuum stations. Customers would have right in and right out access onto the property from Indian School Road and access from one hundred and sixty-sixth Avenue. There is an active traffic light at the intersection, intersection of one hundred and sixty-sixth Avenue and Indian School Road. And a drive aisle from one hundred and sixty-sixth Avenue is to be constructed as a part of the Quick Trip development. Upon arrival at the property, customers will have the option of vacuuming the car or entering the queue for the car wash first. After leaving the tunnel, customers can turn right at the internal driveway to exit onto West Indian School Road or turn left at the internal driveway to approach the vacuum stations or exit on North one hundred and sixty-sixth Avenue. The proposed building elevations include colors and materials consistent with the colors and materials palette approved with the master site plan for the center and the height from ground to highest point is approximately thirty feet, which is well below the maximum height allowed in C two. Staff evaluated the proposed development with use permit and convenience use criteria provided in the zoning ordinance. The tunnel does not face the neighborhood and the proposed development is more than five hundred feet from the nearest resident. We had a neighborhood meeting. Two members of the public attended the meeting. No opposition was received and one member supported the project. On August thirteen, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing for the Car Wash Use Permit Request. After the staff presentation, one resident spoke in support, I'm sorry, one resident did express support but chose not to speak at the public hearing. At the conclusion of the Planning and Zoning Public Hearing, the commission voted six to zero to recommend approval subject to the proposed stipulations. Mayor and Council, this concludes my presentation. The applicant, Madison Leek, is in attendance and has a brief presentation if council desires. Would you like a presentation from the applicant?
Unless she wants to present it, are you willing to wait for some questions? Okay, let's, let's do that. See if we got some questions here from the council. Alright, go ahead and pull up a seat there. Um, with that, um, are there any other speaker cards other than the applicant?
Yes, Mayor, I have one speaker card from Jeff Levy in support of the project but does not wish to speak.
Okay, thank you. Uh, anybody in the audience like to speak other than the applicant? Alright, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. With the council entering a motion and a second to approve the use permit request for a convenience use car wash proposed on approximately one point two six acre property zone planned area development PAD with an underlying zoning of C two general commercial for parcel five oh one dash oh two dash nine fifty-four generally located south of West Indian School Road and east of one hundred and sixty-sixth Avenue with PV, uh, three oh three east to Phase One, subject to stipulation, open for council discussion. Let's see who we start with here. Councilmember Hampton's first.
Yeah, thank you for bringing this again. It's the Kyle Show, so thank you. But I had a question on, um, I pre- appreciate the sound contour study that was done. Um, so I was verifying, so this is its own parcel. It doesn't take, doesn't, it doesn't take over the two parcels that we approved for the two restaurants, correct?
Correct. The Filiberto's and QT have their own use permits approved in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-four, and this would not be replacing those projects.
I thought there was two restaurant pads going to be there. I thought it was going to be like an Arby's or something over there.
I think if there's additional pads available, there's not necessarily been a proposed project at this time, not, not to my knowledge.
Maybe I misunderstood. Yeah, maybe I missed. I remember being for every single one of these rezones for this. I could have swore there was a second restaurant pad, but maybe it got taken.
Councilmember Hampton is.
Maybe I, different, maybe QT took it. I'm not sure.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmember Hampton. There are two sites. There, um, Filiberto's is still moving forward with the process, but Arby's hasn't been moving forward through the process.
But they still have a spot.
There, there's a restaurant pad there.
Pad there, okay. Okay, and which one's closest to, is it Filiberto's closest to this?
Filiberto's is next to the Quick Trip, but I'm not one hundred percent sure.
Okay, I'm just looking at the sound contours. It looks like it's sixty decimals would be, they, roughly sixty decimals is what Filiberto's would be experiencing, people going in and out of there, but I'm just trying to understand what it's going to feel like to be there. Um, I use one sixty-six pretty often since I go to that, that church right there. But, um, okay, so I was verifying that. And then they can get in and out to one sixty-six. That's the path for the, that's the path for, if they want to ride out, you want to go left back to the three oh three. You would, you would go ahead and hit the, go through the parking lot, through QT's parking lot-ish to get back to, uh, the main road there. Is that correct?
That is correct. Councilmember Hampton.
Okay, and then, there's our questions I had. Yeah, I've, all the restaurants, all the residents I've talked to are pretty excited about a car wash because there's really nothing along Indian School there for, for them, especially people in Sadea and other places along the way there. Um, and we had no complaints from Pebble Creek, because I.
We had a Pebble Creek resident attend our neighborhood meeting. They did not express opposition to the project.
Okay, and then, I know I brought up the sound contours, but this is, is this one in the flight path? Yeah, so it's going to be loud there and the three oh three is right there also. So I'm not too concerned about the, the sound, but just wanted to bring it up since there was a study then. Want to give them credit for that, so. Um, what other questions that I have? Yeah, I think that'll be fine. So I, I think I'm okay with this project, uh, moving forward. Um, I'll ask you a random question later. I have a curiosity question about water usage, but I don't know what, what that would, I don't know what, I don't know what other car washes use, but I'm sure they're going to be using the best, uh, quality and water, the latest, the latest water-saving technology. I'm sure. Sure, if she wants to bring it up, that's true.
Thank you, Councilmember Hampton and, and Mayor Pizzillo. I'm certain the applicant would like to speak to the water consumption at the site.
Yeah, thank you.
I just wanted to get up here. Here are records, Madison Leek with the law firm of Birch and Cracchiolo. Um, I think one really helpful statistic is that Superstar is about, uses about a fourth of the water you would use when you would wash your car at home. So it's extremely efficient. They're able to reuse almost all of their water. And then depending on, you know, kind of where it is, how dirty or clean that water is, they just use it at different stages in the cycle. So the water, you know, the, the water's first life, it might be kind of early on when the car is dirty and then it's reused at different times, depending on where the water is at. So it's, it's extremely efficient.
Yeah, I figured it, technology's way better. Yeah, I figured it, technology's way better, and then the last question is that there's another car wash in Goodyear that. When you come out of it, it's usually wet there area, so the road is kinda gets damaged quicker there, so there's usually a pothole in so- some of these car washes, so is that. Think that, hopefully, I think that's gonna be on their property, but I'm not sure the access points, would they be responsible, or would that be the plaza? Or would that be the city to make sure that we're maintaining the road there?
Yeah, through the mayor, council member, I think that's a valid concern, I do think, um, the, the standards and the equipment for car washes has improved a lot. Specifically in the last five years, so maybe that's an older car wash, the blowers on this really are very powerful and get cars very dry. If it's along, um, one of the shared drives, and that would be, um, the responsibility of the tenants, and I think it would ultimately fall on superstar, and I also think superstar would. Want to fix that.
Yeah.
And be a good neighbor, but I'm not familiar, we, our office has the pleasure of working with superstar a lot, and I'm not familiar with that ever happening, but if it did, they wanna be a good neighbor.
That's all I can think of, is one example is where they fixed it, but that's, it's a common spot where just, just the, used to water, always water being on that spot. The people leaving from that particular area, so, I just, it makes sense that they want to have people not get, fall their, how their car, cars fall in potholes, so.
Yeah.
So, okay, that's all the questions I have, so I think it'll be a, a good spot, so, thank you.
Councilmember Cano.
Goodyear has a lot of car washes, and, uh, I have a lot of thoughts about those, but there are some that are really well done, they're, they're put together. Uh, in a way that is visually appealing and, uh, hides a lot of the, the, um, the, the vacuum arms and things like that, and then there's others that don't. And you and I have had multiple conversations about this, and I, I really wanna commend you, I know this is a very awkward parcel to deal with. But the way you've cited it, uh, to put the vacuums, uh, away from the street, the queuing of the cars is not on the street. I think you've just done the best you can, and, uh, you know, in terms of where the blowers are blowing and, and all that, so I just wanted to thank you personally. Cause it is a little point of, uh, contention with me about how some of these car washes have actually ended up, and you've done a great job, so thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate your feedback.
Let's see, Councilwoman Jones?
Uh, I feel the same, Madison, you know that, I think this car wash has been really well constructed, and there's been a lot of thought that's been put into it. Um, you did say, um, just being sure that there was no negativity at your meetings, and it was, there was one, in fact, in support of what was going on. And so we have no problem with that.
Yeah, through the mayor, councilman, this case has been just very positive, it's nice to have a case that, you know, comes in around a very positive way, we had two attendees at the neighborhood meeting. Um, one was very positive, and the other just had some general questions, which is completely fair.
Okay.
At our, uh, planning commission unanimous recommendation, and one, uh, neighbor spoke in support.
Okay, that's all I needed, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Terry.
Thanks, Mayor, um, just to piggyback off that, I, uh, impressed at, uh. The support been able to generate there in the community, I do remember, um, when what eventually became the QT. Um, did get quite a bit of neighborhood feedback, and wasn't always smooth sailing, but. It got there at the end, I know that just because I was sitting in the audience, uh, watching at the time before I decided to, uh, jump on this side. But, um, Kyle, I, I know the Filiberto's, that zoning was two thousand, or twenty twenty-one. Um, I know from there all the way to three oh three, is that all C two, or I know I'm asking about, um. A lot there, and do we know the genesis or when that started, um, or when that was originally zoned for C two, I kn- I know. When the gas station came in, there was a lot of concern about commercial activity, um, various hours of the day. Um. Sorry, um. And I, I, I just kinda wanna know the background of that, um, just because it does a butt up to the RV park. Or the RV storage, and then we get into, uh, Pebble Creek from there, so I didn't know, um. Does the C two here predate twenty twenty-one, do you know?
I'll let Kyle speak to this as well, but our office also worked on the QuickTrip, so I know a lot about this site, this site has actually been designated on Goodyear's general plan. Since nineteen ninety-eight for either commercial or industrial uses, and I think a lot of that relates to the noise contours. And Luke's operations, which we all know are incredibly impor- important, cause this triangle right here ki- pretty much is the boundary. Those pickleball courts and the RV storage, there could not be homes be there, because that's where the boundary is. So these sites have been designated for some type of commercial or industrial since, you know, almost around the time I was born. And then, so even though that, that PV, um, three oh three case was two thousand and eight, and that designated this site for C two, but it's long been some type of commercial or industrial.
Okay, that, that answers my question, and actually gets into my next, uh, little point I was gonna hit about the, uh, air traffic corridor. Uh, Goodyear, we are very unique, um, with having two major airports, uh, in our immediate area. Um, one of them being the Air Force Base, that impacts zoning, that impacts what can go certain places, um, so, yeah, that. It's the reason why this is a triangle, is because of the, um, air traffic, uh, corridor, so. That's all I got, thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Well, it's a great place to put it, and I, I love car washes, I wash my car every week, sometimes twice a week. And I go to the superstar in Avondale, and he just kills me to spend my money in Avondale, but. That said, we were almost going to put the superstar with the QT in Goodyear, and instead we have slim chickens. So I'm really tickled about this, I live in Pebble Creek, it's been on the E group a couple of times, people are thrilled to death to have a decent car wash close by. They're very happy with that, they'd rather see a car wash than something else in there, so, we're happy that you're here, thank you so much for sticking with us and. And coming back to put a, I was afraid y'all would not come back after we said no to the other one, but thank you for sticking with Goodyear, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Councilmember Beckles.
Uh, yes, I just wanna say thank you for this project, I think all my questions have been answered from everybody else, I think this is a great project, thank you.
Great discussion, I think it's a great place that you have there, so I have nothing further to add, so with that, can we open it up for a vote?
She's, she's locked, she's locked out, she can't vote.
She gave you a thumbs up.
That's a good old days.
There you go, pass seven zero, thank you. Uh, does the council have any comments, commendations, or reports on current events or requests?
I do.
Let's start, well, let me start to write, anything, Benita got anything, well, go ahead, what you got? What you got, Wally?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were just still talking to Benita, okay, Team Goodyear knocked it out of the park last week at the league conference, and I want to commend Rosava, Janet, Lorena. Amber, Gina, and Haley, they were incredible, they got all of us where we were supposed to go, cause we didn't know where half of the meetings were. They got us there on time, which was wonderful, and then, besides that, they put our booth together. Cause at this conference, all the cities that are part of it, they do a booth to showcase their, their city. And ours was, of course, the best booth because it had Harkins cups, the popcorn cups, which we thank Harkins very much for donating that to us. And the, the girls were all dressed as ushers, and it was just absolutely the best ever. And next door to us was a photo booth, and that was even more fun, but I really wanna thank them, they've just been incredible, and for them to pull off what they did. And still take care of six of us, it was amazing, so thank you very much, that we have a great staff, great, great staff. And then, this isn't, this is an inquiry of the mayor, I would like to sometime have a possible work session. On electric bikes and scooters.
Alright, hold up just for a second, and see if there's anything else for anybody else to add, before we get to that, anything else anybody wants to add? No? You stole my thunder, I wanted to thank them all as well, because, um, they did an excellent job. Uh, I think it was an excellent conference, a lot of networking, uh, and in fact, I wanna thank, we've got two of our members that now are in the civic class. Uh, Councilmember Beckles, uh, and, uh, Councilwoman Cano.
Me.
No, oh, no, excuse me, Vice Mayor Wally.
That's her.
And, uh, Councilmember Cano, uh, which is gonna be, uh, just started through the league. Uh, adds some civic experience, gets you some broader knowledge on how local government works, and allows you to browse those skillsets, and that's gonna be something that, I don't know, how long's it run?
A year.
A year?
Mm hmm.
So it'll be open again for next year, it's got a great opportunity for you guys to get in that, uh, and, um. I, I thought, I'm glad you guys signed up for it.
Thank you.
And again, it was, it was an excellent conference, uh, I always liked the, uh, the league, because we're all dealing with the same issues, all ninety-two cities.
You talk about your award, your sixteen years.
Well, I got sixteen years, so, yeah, big deal, uh, but, but, yeah. Yeah, you got eight, so it is what it is, but anyway, uh, thanks to staff for lining all that up. Uh, usually it takes two of them to keep me in line, but that's okay, you know, they kept me where I was supposed to be, so I was happy for that. So with that, now, for anybody who wants to ask the manager for anything for a meet, yeah. Anybody?
Did the Vice Mayor, yes.
Is, is that where I do mine?
Yeah.
I would, I, I just would, I wanna throw this out, because at the league, I talked to, I don't know how many, a, a million cities. And, and I didn't find but five or six of us that had not done an ordinance to regulate electric bikes and scooters. And I want us to have a work session to talk about it, Glendale's in the middle of it right now, they've already had two work sessions, they're getting ready for a third. Mesa has it, Chandler has it. Uh. Even Dewey Humboldt has it, and they didn't even know they had electric scooters there, so, but anyway, I just think, I, I want, I'd like to be ahead of it. Rather than wait until it's too late to do something.
I, I think the challenge is the, uh, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen-year-old kids that are, are taking these things out.
Uh, okay, I, and I'll follow up with you to get more details, Vice Mayor, we did do something with a pri- private provider on the scooters, but that. That was a particular provider, so I'll, I'll visit with you, Vice Mayor, to get a little bit more background on that, and we can bring forward a, a work session on it.
There is a, a, there is a school in Goodyear, and I'm so sorry, I, I just heard it on the news real quickly this morning or yesterday. That they have prohibited students from riding e-bikes and scooters to school.
Yeah.
Because it's too dangerous, and, and I, I don't know, I don't recall if it was in elementary school or high school, I'm sorry. Usually high school, they're driving anyway, and they have a license, so they're okay, so it's probably within elementary school.
Okay, well, I will follow up with you on that.
Thank you.
City manager, you got anything for us?
I do not, just except, thanks, um, for the staff and their work last week, it, it was a great success, and appreciate everyone's involvement in that.
Okay, with that, let's see, next meeting is September eighth, uh, be no further business, meeting adjourned.